Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting, Kettering City Council. Today's date is October 13th. And as always, we'll begin with a pledge of allegiance. Didn't have my glasses on, I couldn't see.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the business of liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin tonight's workshop or business meeting, we'll pause for a brief invocation. Dear Lord, thank you for all who serve the Kettering community. Give us enthusiasm for our work and wisdom to make the right decisions. May we remain humble and grateful for the opportunity to lead. Guide this council so we may continue to serve our citizens with integrity and purpose, always remembering to be worthy of our responsibilities entrusted in us by our residents. Before we go on, Rob Scott does have an excused absence and our Miami Valley Communications Council TV operator in the back, Mike Soprani. Mike, thank you as always. Next, we'll move on to approval of minutes, September 22nd, 2020, council meeting and workshop meeting minutes. Mr. Lauder.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have reviewed the minutes from both the council meeting and workshop minutes from September 22nd, 2020. I find them in order and I move for approval.
Second. Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Lauder.
Yes.
Mr. Wanamaker.
Yes.
Mr. Duke.
I'm standing.
Mr. Kleipass.
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mayor Patterson.
Yes. Moving on to proclamation, special presentations, proclamation for Make a Difference Day. Mary Lou Randolph, volunteer administrator, will be accepting the proclamation. Mr. Kleipass.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a proclamation this evening from the office of the mayor. Whereas Make a Difference Day connects people with opportunities to serve, strengthen communities, and promotes civic engagement, and whereas with the continued spread of COVID-19, the need to highlight the importance of volunteerism has come into sharp focus. And whereas established over two decades ago by points of lights, the city of Kettering is proud to be a nationally recognized participant. And whereas the city of Kettering will provide opportunities for all to participate in this day of service designed to leverage the dedication, commitment, and power of volunteers to address a variety of needs in our community. And whereas volunteers from service clubs, faith-based organizations, and local schools will assist the city by planting trees in Van Buren Park, distributing face masks at Christ United Methodist Central Christian Church and David's United Church of Christ, distributing personnel protective equipment to local seniors, and creating holiday greeting cards for active-duty military members and nursing home residents. Now therefore, Donalee Patterson, mayor of the city of Kettering, Ohio, does hereby proclaim October 24th, 2020, to be Make a Difference Day in the city of Kettering, and urges all citizens to observe this day by joining efforts to make a positive impact and truly make a difference in our community. Signed this 13th day of October in the year 2020, Donalee Patterson, mayor of the city of Kettering, Ohio.
Thank you, Buck. You Vice Mayor Kleipass? I've touched this now, I want you to know. Some words to say, "I trust."
Thank you, Mayor Patterson and city council and city staff members. The city of Kettering has been a proud participant in this initiative since its inception. Our efforts have been recognized at both the state and national levels. Thanks to our dynamic team of volunteers and community partners, we have several activities planned to take place on Make a Difference Day, which is Saturday, October 24th. In an effort to keep our community safe and healthy, for the first time ever, we will be distributing facial masks at three locations. That will be Christ Church here on Troyer Road, David's Church on David Road, and Central Christian Church on Four Boulevard. This will take place from 9:00 to 11:00. Jackie Councilwoman Fisher is sporting one of the masks that will be distributed.
Come see me at the Central Christian Church, that's where I'll be distributing. The best place ever.
They are washable, they are not medical-grade, and I want to give a shout-out to Parkview Church, who put tags on all of the masks for us. It'll be a drive-through event, so there's no need to get out of your car. You'll just drive through, roll your window down, and we'll give you a mask. And this is until the supplies last, so once they're gone, they're gone. We will also be planting trees at Van Buren Park, and that is thanks to a grant from Montgomery County. Also, volunteers will meet over at Town and Country the morning of the 24th, and we're going to work with senior services coordinator Vicki Caraher to distribute PPA kits to the seniors living in the housing behind Town and Country. The last several years, we've had a greeting card project where actually hundreds of volunteers have gathered to create greeting cards for our active-duty military and for our nursing homes. Because we could not gather in person this year, we prepared kits to give out to the community so that people could do this activity at home. I am very proud of our volunteers. I did an email blast. We had 55 kits, and within 24 hours, all kits were spoken for. So that just goes to tell you just how much our volunteers care about one another and care about the community. You're all invited to stop by any of the activities on Make a Difference Day. 9:00 to 11:00 is the timeframe. For additional information, anyone is welcome to call the volunteer office at 937-296-2433. And we're looking forward to another great Make a Difference Day. Despite all of the barriers, we were still able to arrange some activities. So that is our Make a Difference Day plan for 2020. Does anyone have any questions?
No, just really a comment. It's different. We've done a number of drive-throughs, and while they're not the same, first of all, thank you for putting together all these drive-throughs. We just did one for, what was it?
Neighborhood Pride.
Neighborhood Pride of where the recipients of the award drove in front of the government center here, and we rotated among us, handing out the certificates and the little congratulation card and the video to them, as well as we've done employee-type luncheons, drive-through. Jackie loved that because she got to climb up on big old snowplow trucks to hand them their food and all, so there were some side benefits to that, but it's been different. I guess what, excuse me, what I'm trying to say is you guys have bent over backwards to continue to recognize the efforts of our residents and our employees, and we're getting ready to do our volunteer luncheon, which we usually have 400 people at. How a drive-through luncheon is going to work out, I guess we'll find out at the presidential here in a few weeks. But thank you for, we could have taken the easy way out and just sent them a letter, signed a card or whatever, and thanked them for their service, their volunteer, their taking care of their property, et cetera. And I think it says a lot for the type of community where we have come up with creative ideas to recognize these various groups, and you at that helm, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Amen.
Thank you.
Do I have an amen? Thank you. All right. Next, we'll move on to, although apparently the mayor's not able to present the awards directly, but we'll move on to the mayor's award. Mary Lou Randolph.
So, the mayor's award was established in 1983, and it honors outstanding volunteers who are making valuable contributions to the community through volunteer service. Recipients of the award must either be a resident of Kettering, or their volunteer work must be the majority performed in Kettering. An adult and a youth award are presented each year. Awards are typically presented by our mayor at a city council meeting in April during National Volunteer Week. However, nothing is typical in 2020. So here we are in October. I would like to invite Bobby Carnes to come down to the podium area. So Bobby is the recipient of our youth award for volunteer service. Bobby lives in Kettering with her father, Robert. Her family includes her grandmother Cathy, her brother Christian, and two sisters, Taylor and Elizabeth. She is a 2020 Fairmont High School graduate. She was involved in the National Honor Society and class council. Her service includes assisting with the MS 5K Walk, the Alzheimer's 5K Walk, helping with crafts and visiting residents at retirement centers. While at Fairmont, she mentored freshmen to ensure a smooth transition into high school. She helped with food drives, tutored fellow classmates and fifth graders. She also took it upon herself to make care packages and cards for the victims of the tornadoes. Bobby currently attends the University of Dayton and is working on a degree in nursing. Bobby was asked by her nominator why she volunteers, and I love this response. She said, "This is the community that I grew up in. My hometown has given so much to me, an amazing education and so much opportunity. For this, I feel that I owe it to myself and to others to help them as much as they have helped me. I would not be where I am today without the strength of my community and the positive impact my community has had on me. This I will never forget. Bobby, we're really proud of your accomplishments. Your care and concern for others is evidenced by the career path that you chose, so you are truly worthy of the award, and congratulations."
I think I'm supposed to throw up for a moment.
We're going to get it, picture. I don't, how do we want to do this? Can you?
I'm multitasking, sister.
All right. No, I don't want to be blocking either. There we go. That's good. You have your masks.
Don't smile.
There we go.
Smile.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. I just wanted to say it's been a pleasure to serve this community, and I don't plan on stopping anytime soon. I plan on continuing to serve my community while at the University of Dayton, and you know, there's just no better feeling than the one you get when you make someone's day or help someone that's less fortunate than you. So this award means a lot to me, so thank you.
I forgot I had my A-18 on.
No, you planned that, remember? So I would like to invite Bob Montavon down to the podium. Bob is the recipient of the mayor's award for volunteer service. Obviously, he's the adult recipient. Bob resides in Kettering, where he and his wife Christie raise their family. He is president of Resolute Wealth Management, and he is a graduate of the Kettering Leadership Academy Class of 2012. Okay, I might have added that. Bob's service includes a variety of volunteer roles with a host of organizations spanning over 20 years. It includes coaching baseball for the First Kettering Athletic League, scout leader and scout master with Boy Scouts of America, volunteering with Oak Creek Swim Team, Fairmont High School Marching Band, St. Charles Youth Group, including summer mission trips. Bob also served on the Kettering Parks Foundation. Bob is a very active member of the Kettering Doorwood Optimist Club, where he's held multiple officer roles, committee roles, and most recently Lieutenant Governor for Zone 13 of Optimist International. He also directs Kettering Tri-Star Basketball and is a lead volunteer for Kids' Day in the Park. When asked what makes this nominee outstanding, Bob's nominator stated, "Bob is outstanding on various levels. The one outstanding quality Bob possesses is his unwavering dedication to the Kettering community." Recently, Bob and his wife lost their daughter in a tragic automobile accident. While most men would withdraw, Bob found strength within his family and his community. Even through this most personal tragedy, Bob continued to serve his community through his active volunteerism. He never gave up on those who needed his help, even in a time of great sorrow within in his own family. Not only does this make Bob an outstanding nominee, it makes him one of the great pillars of community action within the city of Kettering. Thank you, Bob, for the unselfish gift of your dedication and your commitment to Kettering.
If I present this more because you have to put up a D-3, that is an honor. That's not that hard.
Oh, yes, please, please.
Do you want me to make a speech?
Sure, we do.
Well, I told Mark just a few minutes ago that it's an honor to get this award, but my Optimist Club Doorwood, which a few of you guys are familiar with, and that's why I wore my mask tonight. Actually, I was going to wear my Dayton mask, but when they told me they were nominating for me for this award, I thought, oh my gosh, I can't embarrass them, so I got to think about, what have I done? I never thought I would get this award, so I'm just overwhelmed and thankful and appreciative. It's an honor, so thank you very much.
Thank you to both of you. Appreciate it. That's what, that's what makes this community great, and from our youth, I'll call you youth, because when you're 66, everything's a youth anymore, you know? So, and congratulations for everything you do, and we look forward to seeing what our accomplishments you make throughout your life and hopefully some volunteer things in the city of Kettering. So congratulations. Next, we'll move on to presentation, and this must be the Mary Lou Randolph night.
I was killing three birds.
There you go, I like that. Our volunteer administrator will be making the presentation this evening. Mary Lou.
You know, I just, you know, trying to be.
I never get tired of hearing from you, so.
Okay, so Neighborhood Pride. Neighborhood Pride program divides the city into 12 districts. In June, July, and August, one property is selected from each of the districts, as well as one commercial property, to be recognized as a Neighborhood Pride Award winner. Typically, award winners are invited to a city council meeting to receive a certificate from Mayor Patterson. This year, as the mayor stated, it was done drive-through style last Tuesday. All winners received a photo of their property, a note from the mayor, a copy of tonight's video presentation, which will be posted to the website tomorrow. Before we view the 2020 Neighborhood Pride video, I want to thank those who made the program possible. This year, like everything else, was a challenge, and so when I talked to Steve about this program, I said, "I think we can do it safely, but it is going to remain to be seen how the volunteers feel about doing it." And so I am so thankful for them for working with me to make modifications, for saying yes, for reviewing all of the properties, and for their can-do spirit, which was so uplifting and encouraging. The committee co-chairs are Rob Jan, Gail Carone, and Mark and Carol Messer. I also want to thank Rob, Bob Jan, who is the father of Rob Jan. Our signs were looking not real prideful, they're very expensive to replace, so Bob Jan took all of the signs to his house, he repaired them, painted them, and would not take a dime for any of the material. So I thought that was pretty awesome that he did that for us. Also Carl Sukamo of Miami Valley Communications Council for filming the properties and putting the video together. It's a pleasure to work with him every summer on this project. And also Mayor Patterson, city council, and city staff for your continued support of the program and your participation and willingness to help out with the awards last Tuesday. So on behalf of the Neighborhood Pride Committee, who usually would be here with me tonight, but we congratulate all of the 2020 award winners. So now we have the video to show. Please note the 2020 is crooked on the horizon. Please note the 2020 is crooked on the horizon.[184.12][184.12]1 1 2 3 4 5 6
Mayor Lou, well done again this year. Thank you. I think it just goes to show that even in a pandemic, our residents want to take care of their property and all. So, thank all the residents and businesses for participating this year. Thanks for the volunteer offices, and all the folks you have that help you select the winners, as well as Carl for taking the pictures, and also your co-chairs for doing a great job, who were up helping us hand out certificates or handing out the bags for the awards. So, congratulations. We look forward to a normal Neighborhood Pride next year, hopefully. So, thank you. Next, we'll move on to, I guess I ought to do the public hearings, which there are none, public comment on legislation. Anyone wishing to speak for council with comments or new information about legislation on tonight's agenda may do so at this time. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Speakers must state their name and address. Comments should be addressed to council. If you have comments that are not about legislation on tonight's agenda, there will be an opportunity for those to be heard later in the meeting. Does anyone speak on legislation tonight? Sure? All right, we'll move on to ordinances and second reading. We have none, so we'll move right into resolutions. Vice Mayor Clepass.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept grant funds from the State of Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services. The estimated cost is $24,245. Amount budgeted is zero. It's requested by Judge Long and Judge Dressel. I move for approval.
Second. Sorry.
Mr. Sweeterman.
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution will authorize the acceptance of a grant from the State of Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services. It is the 2020 Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding Program. The city or the courts will receive a grant in the amount of $24,245. The grant will be used for audio and visual equipment in the courtroom to allow for remote, improve the remote processing in the court system. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Sweeterman? Being none, call the roll, please.
Mr. Clepass?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Lawter?
Yes.
Mr. Wanamaker?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a final agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for ODOT Project MOT for State Route 48-6.95. It's PID number 103422, city project number 02-100W, within the city limits, within the city of Kettering. Now, the estimated cost is $1,476,360. However, ODOT's share is $1,181,088, with our city share being $295,272. The amount budgeted is $1,200,000. And it is requested by the Engineering Department, and I move for approval.
Second. Mr. Bergstrasser.
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution will authorize the city to enter into a final agreement with ODOT to complete the asphalt resurfacing of State Route 48, Far Hills Avenue, in Kettering, from David Road to the Oakwood Corporation limit. As mentioned, ODOT will contribute 80% of the project cost, and the city will contribute the remaining 20% of the project cost. ODOT will plan to bid the project in November 2020, and the project will be constructed in spring of 2021. Once we have bids in from ODOT in November, if a supplemental appropriation is needed to cover the additional cost over what is budgeted, we will approach City Council at that time, once we have hard numbers from the bid. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Bergstrasser? Being none, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Lawter?
Yes.
Mr. Wanamaker?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mr. Clepass?
Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution declaring the necessity of repairing curbs, sidewalks, and drive approaches on various streets as part of the 2021 Curb, Sidewalk, and Drive Approach Repair Project. This is project number 05-121. It's being requested by our Engineering Department. I move for approval.
Second. Mr. Bergstrasser.
Thank you, Your Honor. As mentioned, this resolution will declare the necessity of repairing curbs, sidewalks, and drive approaches as part of next year's Curb, Sidewalk, and Drive Approach Repair Program. This program is primarily going to be concentrated in what we're calling the Indian Oil Platte, which is generally west of Valleywood Drive, south of Dorothy Lane, and east of Wilmington Pike. Property owners are responsible for the necessary repairs to their curb sidewalks and drive approaches, and they will be assessed for repairs if they are not completed on their own. A copy of the preliminary estimated assessments for each property is on file with the Clerk of Council, and we will be notifying residents via certified letter in the coming weeks for these repairs. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Bergstrasser? Being none, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Lawter?
Yes.
Mr. Wanamaker?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mr. Clepass?
Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for funding from the Ohio Public Works Commission for the Flasser Avenue Bridge Replacement Project and the Woodman Drive Resurfacing Project. This is requested by Engineering, and I move for approval.
Second. Mr. Bergstrasser.
Thank you, Your Honor. As mentioned, this resolution will declare the necessity of repairing curbs, sidewalks, and drive approaches as part of next year's Curb, Sidewalk, and Drive Approach Repair Program. This program is primarily going to be concentrated in what we're calling the Indian Oil Platte, which is generally west of Valleywood Drive, south of Dorothy Lane, and east of Wilmington Pike. Property owners are responsible for the necessary repairs to their curb sidewalks and drive approaches, and they will be assessed for repairs if they are not completed on their own. A copy of the preliminary estimated assessments for each property is on file with the Clerk of Council, and we will be notifying residents via certified letter in the coming weeks for these repairs. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Bergstrasser? Being none, call the roll, please.
Mr. Lawter?
Yes.
Mr. Wanamaker?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mr. Clepass?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for funding from the Ohio Public Works Commission for the Flasser Avenue Bridge Replacement Project
We are applying for two projects this year. One is the replacement of the Flesher Avenue Bridge, which is on Flesher Avenue, just north of Patterson Road in northeast Kettering. The other one is a resurfacing project on Wooden Drive from Wilmington Pike up to Stalker Drive, very similar to what was completed recently on Wilmington Pike. If these projects are awarded funds, we would plan to start construction in early 2022. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Bergstrasser? Being none, call the roll, please.
Mr. Wanamaker?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mr. Cleopass?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Lawter?
Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to use competitive bargaining and negotiated quotes to contract for snow and ice removal services at city facilities during the 2021, 2020, 2021 season. Estimated cost is $150,000. It is budgeted, requested by Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts Department. I move for approval.
Second. Mr. Sweeterman.
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution will allow us to seek quotes and competitive bargaining for our snow removal. The snow removal locations will be the Kettering Business Park, the Kettering Government Center, as well as all of our fire stations. The estimated cost will be $125,000 for our government facilities and $26,000 for the Kettering Business Park for a total estimated cost of $151,000. This gives us the ability to enter into a one-year agreement with two additional 12-month periods after that. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Sweeterman? Being none, call the roll, please.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mr. Cleopass?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Lawter?
Yes.
Mr. Wanamaker?
Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Home Ownership Center of Greater Dayton to provide counseling services as part of the city's housing and foreclosure prevention programs. The estimated cost is $27,000. The funds are available. Requested by Planning and Development Department. I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Sweeterman.
Thank you, Your Honor. The city has contracted with the Home Ownership Center since 2008 for our housing and foreclosure, huh, housing programs and foreclosure prevention programs. In 2019, they served 178 households. As mentioned, the estimated cost is $27,000. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Sweeterman? Being none, call the roll, please.
Mr. Cleopass?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Lawter?
Yes.
Mr. Wanamaker?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Miami Valley Fair Housing Center for operations of the city's fair housing program. Estimated cost and funds available are $34,000. It is requested by Planning and Development Department, and I move for approval.
Second. Mr. Sweeterman.
Thank you, Your Honor. The city, as a result of our receiv, being a recipient of community development block grant funds and home funds, is required to affirmatively further fair housing. We utilize our contract with Miami Valley Fair Housing Center for this and for those programs, and the estimated cost is $34,000. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Sweeterman? Being none, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Lawter?
Yes.
Mr. Wanamaker?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mr. Cleopass?
Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a facade and site improvement grant agreement for the property located at 2505 Wilmington Pike. Estimated cost is $25,000. The amount budgeted is zero. It's being requested by our Planning and Development Department, and I move for approval.
Second. Mr. Sweeterman.
Thank you, Your Honor. The owners of the property at 2505 Wilmington Pike would like to enter into a facade improvement agreement with the city of Kettering. The maximum grant amount will be $25,000, and as you know from previous grants, it is a matching grant up to $25,000 for, in this case, a facade improvement program. The owners are going to open a restaurant. This site is the former Norton's site on Wilmington Pike. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Sweeterman? Being none, call the roll, please.
Mr. Lawter?
Yes.
Mr. Wanamaker?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mr. Cleopass?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for and accept the Montgomery County OVI Task Force Grant from the Ohio Department of Public Safety. This is requested by the police department. Estimated cost is $15,000. The amount that's budgeted is zero. I move for approval.
Second. Chief Prossman.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is $15,000 that we're requesting the grant for from the Ohio Department of Public Safety. This will be for years 2020, 2021, for officers working overtime to enforce operating vehicles while under the influence. Yep, answering questions.
Any questions of chief? Being none, call the roll, please.
Mr. Wanamaker?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mr. Cleopass?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Lawter?
Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase body worn cameras for the police department. Estimated cost is $236,030. Amount budgeted is zero. It is requested by the police department, and I move for approval.
Second. Chief.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a program that we are requesting after conversations with members of the community and members with council. In light of recent events that have occurred across the country, Your Honor, I will get into a little bit of the quote that we got from WatchGuard, because there has been some questions about the pricing for these cameras. There will be an onsite installation fee from WatchGuard. I will add that WatchGuard is the company that we already have our in-car cameras with. In 2015, when we went with this company, we knew that down the road we were probably going to go with body cameras and thought that they would be a good program for us, a good company for us. We did look at others while we were looking at body cameras, but we did end up with WatchGuard. So the onsite installation, and if you're following along with your calculator, I'm just giving you the highlights, so please no question about why I come up short.
Calculator.
Again, installation fees will be $5,000. The body worn cameras, there will be 87 that will be purchased separately. Each camera will cost $995 for a total of $86,565. We will have the transfer station needed to charge and upload the videos from the cameras. That will be $17,940. We're also purchasing extra batteries for each one of the cameras that we are purchasing, knowing the, the number of hours that officers work. We really want to make sure that they continue to have battery life. Those are $99 each, 90 of those, so a total of $8,910. We are also purchasing three additional in-car cameras for our school resource officers. Those cars did not have them last year. Those will be bundled with also body worn cameras for the officers as well, so that's where the three extra cameras come for, come from. That will total $16,110. The evidence library, library, and annual device, which is license and support for our storage of all the video that is going, that we're going to generate with these cameras. The price for that will be $3,750. We also need to replace three front-facing cameras for our cruisers that already have them. Three of those will cost a total of $600. We also need to purchase redactive software. This is software that'll be used when we get record requests. We need to redact certain information that is on there. The price of that will be $5,995 for that software. Then support for that will be another $2,795. And then we have to buy an additional server for that redactive software. The total for that, um, and the tower that we need will be a total of $9,600. As I said before, this is, we are purchasing these or requesting that we purchase these because of the conversations that we've had with both the community and with, with council. I would tell you that, as I've said many times, standing up in front of you, I'm very proud of the work that the men and women of the Kettering Police Department do and the relationship that they have with our community. I do believe that these cameras will just help strengthen that relationship that we have. And as we've seen before from our in-car cameras when we had critical incidents, just how well our officers react in this city. I'm very proud of, and I think that this will just do nothing but strengthen and show the work that they do. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Chief Prossman? Mr. Duke?
No questions, just a comment, Your Honor. I just want to congratulate, and I know all of us on council feel the same way, I think, to our chief, uh, this has been a long road, and, and it's been a hard road in many ways. And I hope our residents heard the detail of cost that goes into this system that we're putting in. It's a lot of work and a lot of effort, but it's going to protect our officers. It's going to protect our citizens even more, and I just want to congratulate you, chief, for all your hard work on getting this done.
Second, just kind of be happy to, that we're joining nearly half of the police department nationwide in the use of, of body cams. We're proud of our police department's professional reputation and the trust that they will build on our residents and the business owner's trust. We believe the addition of the body cameras will help maintain and build on that community's trust. So, thank you. We appreciate it. I know our residents do. It's a different time. It's a difficult time, and we and you made the right decisions in moving forward to this, so congratulations and, and all the hard work you put into this, so. Anybody else? If not, call the roll, please.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mr. Cleopass?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Lawter?
Yes.
Mr. Wanamaker?
Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution to make supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Kettering, State of Ohio, during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2020. From the General Fund, Economic Development Operating Expenses, $25,000. Police Department Operating Expenses, $236,030. From the Special Grants and Program Fund, others, $39,245. The estimated cost of this resolution is $30,275. The amount budgeted is zero. It's requested by the Finance Department. I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Sweeterman.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have obviously three, uh, three or four items tonight in our previous resolutions that appro, that require the appropriations of funds. $25,000 for the facade improvement grant that was authorized earlier. $236,030 in appropriation for the police department and the body worn cameras. And then also grant funding, $24,245 for the municipal court in the grant that you authorized earlier. And then $15,000 for the OVI grant that Chief Prossman spoke of before. Be happy to answer any questions on the supplemental.
Any questions, Mr. Sweeterman? Being none, call the roll, please.
Mr. Cleopass?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Lawter?
Yes.
Mr. Wanamaker?
Yes.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
Yes. Moving on to ordinances in first reading. We have none. Certifications and petitions. Ms. Kaczynski.
Your Honor, we do not have any certifications or petitions this evening.
Thank you. City Manager reporting community update. Mr. Sweeterman.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have a few items for you tonight in the community update. The first is just, I'd like to recognize the Kettering Fire Department. They have once again received the American Heart Association's Mission Lifetime EMS Gold Plus Recognition Award. And this recognizes our department for implementing quality improvement measures for the treatment of patients who experience severe heart attacks. And so, once again, I would like to congratulate our fire department for receiving that award. I'd like to remind everyone, I'm sorry. My, my slides are a little out of order. Congratulate the fire department for their budget presentation award. They have once again received the Government Finance Officers Association Award for their budget. This is 35 years consecutive now that the finance department has received that award. And I want to congratulate Kelly O'Connell, our budget manager, our finance director, Nancy Gregory, and frankly, all of our staff in the finance department and the staff throughout the city who worked diligently on the budget preparation throughout the year. Also like to mention that it is, will be Medicare Open Enrollment very soon, starting October the 15th, and will run through December the 7th. Our Kettering Connection operation is very much involved in that. Our citizens can contact the connection at 296-3330 to set up an appointment to help with the Medicare enrollment process. Just a reminder to everybody that our leaf pickup program will begin on Monday, October the 19th. And we encourage our residents to rake their leaves out to the curb. Does not have to be in the street, but just adjacent to the curb. It is only for leaves. Any other type of debris is dangerous, not only for our staff, but for our equipment as well. If you have other brush and other items, you can take that to our Yard Debris Center on Woodman Center Drive. Our leaf hotline will be up and operational at 296-2472 to let you know when you can expect us to be in your area of the community. And finally, Your Honor, just a reminder that Beggar's Night will take place on Saturday, October, October 31st from 6 to 8 p.m. We do encourage our residents, if they are going to participate, to have their lights on. If they're not going to participate, their lights not being on will be an indication so that the trick-or-treaters will move on to the next house. So help keep everybody safe and follow the state's guidelines for participation in Beggar's Night. But the most important thing you can do is, if you are participating, have your lights on so it's safe for the kids coming to, throughout the community. Your Honor, that's all I have for your tonight's community update. You have to answer any other questions.
Any questions, Mr. Sweeterman? Thank you. Next we'll move on to audience participation point programming. Anybody who would like to speak before council, please come on down to the podium. We do need your name and address. Is there anyone who'd like to speak this evening? Move on to council, city council updates, reports. Vice Mayor Cleopass.
Thank you, Your Honor. On October 2nd, most of us were able to attend Chief Butts's retirement party, our retirement celebration. He's our fire chief that has now left us and moved on to other things. At the same time, the city manager announced the appointment of Mitch Robbins as our new chief. And kind of closely tied to that, Mitch Robbins, the new chief, announced his replacement, who's the assistant chief, Dave Roth. So congratulations to all three of those folks, and we wish them well in their new positions. The only, the only other thing I want to mention is, on October 6th, the mayor talked about, and Mary Lou Randolph talked about, the Neighborhood Pride Awards. Several of us were able to go to the government center and participate in the drive-through that occurred there, passing out the certificates and, and whatever else was in the package we gave each, each winner that came by. But it made me think we're, we've done so many drive-throughs here during the pandemic that we're, we're right up there with McDonald's and Chick-fil-A now, as far as being able to efficiently, efficiently operate drive-throughs. And talking about small business, last but not least, small businesses give life to our city, and right now, they need our help more than ever. Support your local community businesses during these trying times. Thank you, Your Honor. That's all I have.
Ms. Fisher.
Your Honor, as a resident of our great city, I was excited to shred some of my personal data, and I was, I was surprised how many volunteers we had out there helping, so I was bummed I didn't get to work as long as I thought I would. But I really want to uplift our parks and rec. Just finished our soccer season. I was helping Coach Shampton, coached the four and five-year-olds on the soccer fields, and wow, how exhausting. But those kids had a blast, and, and it was good for them to feel normal, even though we were shouting through masks as the coaches. They, they enjoyed the experience a lot, and so I was really appreciative of the parks and recs being able to do that. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Mr. Lawter.
Your Honor, thank you. I would only second the comments that Councilman Cleopass made about our fire departments, some of the new administrative positions. I wish those gentlemen well in their new jobs. I also attended the Neighborhood Pride drive-through, and one of the recipients wasn't able to get there that night, and I think several of us took those to their get there that night, and I think several of us took those to their home, and the next morning, I stopped by this one particular residence, and the lady came out, and she was thrilled to death. I don't think she had received a letter, so this was, she was surprised about this, and was new to the community, chose Kettering, had resided elsewhere. She and her husband had resided elsewhere for decades, and wanted to downsize and found a great house, and is just tickled to death with that award and the fact that the city took the time to do something like that and recognize her efforts. The other thing, on a more comical note, on the Neighborhood Pride, we saw residences tonight, I think they need to add a new category, neighborhood arboretums. They are beyond a couple geraniums. These places are unbelievable, but I also feel that my wife and I deserve some credit for all of these because we seem to be feeding all the deer in the city. They eat our stuff down to the ground, so these people have beautiful plants and shrubs. That's all, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. Wanamaker.
I can't top that, Your Honor, I have no report.
Mr. Duke.
I have no formal report, but in, in the spirit, Mr. Scott's not here tonight, and he always mentions this every year, but in the spirit of our former colleague, Mr. Thompson, who always mentioned it every year as we go into leaf pickup time, asking parents to please do not allow your children to play in the piles of leaves that are going to be near the street. It can be very dangerous when cars come by, they can't see the kids in the leaves, so that's all. In that spirit, I just encourage parents to, to take watch of that and be careful. That's all I have, Your Honor, thanks.
Thank you. Just, thanks, Keith. Just a few things, we've touched on some of them on nine, or on September twenty-fifth, I had the opportunity to participate with Brooks Compton, Mayor of Centerville. We did a Zoom meeting. We were the speakers for, for Kettering Centerville Kiwanis Club, so we're becoming quite good at Zoom phone calls and being answer, able to answer questions for a meeting or whatever it may be, and that was interesting. The two Kiwanis, or the two communities, we each gave a little bit, five, ten-minute talk on what things we were doing as a community, and I think it was pretty well-received. Number of questions we had afterwards of things they didn't know we were doing, but were much appreciative of us pointing it out to them. We talked about the retirement party of Chief Butts. Chief did a great job. Chief Butts was around here and led the fire station renovations and all, and we wish Chief Butts much enjoyment in his, his much-deserved retirement. We look forward to working with Chief Robbins now, and who's been with the Kettering Fire Department for a number of years. Great choice, and we look forward to him carrying on the great work that is done in our, in our fire department, so. Ms. Fisher talked about Shred Day, it was a good day. Crowds were a little lighter, I noticed that because of the pandemic, I got a report there was about a hundred cars less than what we typically have. Congratulations to Day Air Credit, or thank you to Day Air Credit Union for once again sponsoring our, our Shred Day. Next, we have a few things that are coming up. We talked about leaf pickup begins the nineteenth. We probably could have began it last week if I drive my neighborhoods and see the piles of leaves, and I'm in the ninth district, so it'll be a while, our leaves will be, will be ready for them. So, a couple events we've talked about a number of times tonight, National Make a Difference Day coming up on the twenty-fourth, and the handing out of masks, et cetera. Don't forget about Halloween that's coming up. Be safe. Do things that are safe with the kids and the Beggar's Night and all the programs. It is on October the thirty-first from six to eight. Parents, please make sure your children know that if the house is dark, do not approach that house, they've chosen to not participate. So, enjoy it, follow the pandemic guidelines, and have a great, great time. Next month, we have Veterans Day and Thanksgiving, along with our volunteer appreciation drive-through. Chief Prossman, again, thank you for putting together and us passing this evening the body cam legislation, which will enable safety for our officers as well as transparency to the public as a whole, and I think the time was right for it, and I think we made the right decision and led by example through this thing, so thank you and congratulations